Hello and good evening. Welcome to the Cape Elizabeth School Board Regular Business Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May 14th. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda for tonight? All right, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the school board minutes?
I move we approve the school board minutes from the regular business meeting Tuesday, April 4th, 2019. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Next, we have comments from our student reps.
Hi. So, to start off, I think this is the first meeting we've been to since the new Power School thing has been implemented. So, we just wanted to bring that up because we know that a lot of students have come up to us, like specifically, just voicing their concerns. And so, it's clearly like something that students have a lot to say about.
Yeah, I think for a lot of students, it's kind of been like a tough transition from going to having 24/7 access to their grades to a Monday. And I think there are some advantages to that, but I also at the same time think there are some disadvantages. A lot of students who aren't on top of their work rely on the Power School portal in order to check and see if they have missing grades and stuff like that. And I was just in a classroom yesterday and a kid went in and was like, "I'm sorry, I can't get the stuff in because I don't know what I've missed." Because the Power School portal's only open one day a week. So, I think that's been kind of a struggle for kids who don't necessarily have as much of an academic drive in school. And also, I feel like it should have been a little bit more of a school discussion before it being restricted. Because I think a lot of kids had some other great ideas about stress management and not necessarily going straight to taking the portal away. I'm slightly biased, though. I know I'm very addicted to my grades, so I can't say much to that, but yeah.
One other thing was that students have come up to us and said was that at any other time of the year, they felt like it would have been, or they feel like that it would be helpful. It's just that it was kind of the end of the year and students do need to know what they're missing. Or maybe if they do need to make up a grade, they feel like they should be able to check if they have not as great as the grade, just so that they have the ability to make it out before the year is over.
Yeah.
Those are just some things that students have said.
Yeah, it's just tough, like kind of closing out the end of the year and only knowing what your grades are for a certain six-hour period. I think that's really hard for kids. And especially for juniors, because it's like a really important time of year for us when applying to colleges and stuff like that. And to have access and see what you need to improve, what you don't need to improve. And yes, it's a lot of stress, but it's okay to be a little bit stressed sometimes because like it kind of motivates you, at least for me. But, and then in other news in high school, AP exams are going on right now. I don't really know if that... AP exams are going on right now, so a lot of students are studying for that.
I think other than that, just seniors are almost done, so...
Yeah, this is their last week in high school.
Changes in high school, kind of.
Yeah, big transition, so.
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Do students feel like they have an opportunity to talk with administration and voice their concerns and help come up with a better solution?
Yeah, I think one big thing that students have said is that they wish that they had kind of a voice in the change. So, I think if that were to be, like if we couldn't make that something that could happen, I think a lot of students would like that opportunity.
Yeah, I think students would like more of a sit-down. It wasn't really explained to us very much. It was kind of just in an email. And I think a lot of students, it would have been more beneficial if it were to be more of an assembly talk, like this is what's going to happen, this is why we're doing it, just a little bit more formal so students really understand more. Because I think there's a certain amount of misunderstanding that is probably involved in the new Power School.
I really, really appreciate your sharing, your feedback, not only with the school board, but for all the administrators who are listening here tonight. And I think this is a perfect example of how important and helpful the student rep role can be. I mean, you're doing exactly what you should be. You're listening to your peers, you're coming back and telling us. And I think your feedback that you shared tonight will probably make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're all set.
Yeah.
We're all really happy.
Thank you. Okay. Next, are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on agenda items? Seeing none. Okay, next, we have on our agenda presentations. First, we have the award recipients for the 2019 Maine Regional Scholastics Art Awards. Rosamund Gross.
Hi, that's me. Good evening. My name is Rosamund Gross and I teach visual art at the high school. And I'm here tonight with two out of three high school students who are recognized this year for their artistic accomplishments through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And we've been invited to share with you all both the recognized works themselves created by these young artists and to share some insight in their own words into their process and their experiences with the arts here at Cape and on their own. And I just wanted to share a bit about the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. And it's something that was established in 1923 and is presented by the Alliance for Young Artists and Writers, which is a nonprofit organization with the quote-unquote "mission to identify teenagers with exceptional artistic and literary talent and bring their remarkable work to a national audience through the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards." And it's one of the nation's largest, longest-running and most prestigious visual and literary arts program, recognizing creative accomplishments of students in grades seven through 12. And I myself recall feeling excited and honored during my own high school career when a drawing that I created of a bicycle, I recall, was recognized through the Scholastic Arts and hung on display in public view in downtown Boston. And here in Maine, the Maine College of Art is an affiliate partner of the Scholastic Art Awards and organizes the regional submissions. And regional awards include Gold Key, Silver Key, Honorable Mention, American Visions nominee, and American Voices nominee. And Gold Keys and American Vision and Voices nominees advance onto national judging. And artwork is submitted under 17 different categories, such as digital art, painting, photography, sculpture, et cetera. And the judging criteria is based on originality, technical skill, and emergence of a personal vision or voice. And I have placed a QR code... Oh, is it here?
Yep.
Which, if you scan it with a fancy device, will bring you to the Google Photo album. And that shows each of the five recognized works of art for 2019 from the high school. And I would like to introduce both Cecily Trout, who is a sophomore, and she received an honorable mention and a Silver Key for her two paintings, drawing paintings. And Vivian Sullivan, who's a junior and received an honorable mention and a Silver Key for her painting and digital art. And Julia Macai, who is a junior, was also recognized with a Gold Key and was an American Visions nominee. She's not here tonight because she's studying for the semester at the Oxbow School in Napa, California, which is a single semester arts school for high school juniors and seniors. And I just encourage you all to give feedback to these young artists and celebrate with them in their recognition through the Scholastic Art Awards. And Cecily, I'd like to invite you to come on up and tell us about the pieces that were recognized this year.
Hi, I'm Cecily. This was the drawing that I got a Silver Key award for. And I saw a photo from a journalist online and I was inspired by the photo. And I thought, she had a really intense look on her face and I wanted to draw it immediately. So, I used Copic sketch markers to draw it. And then this was the honorable mention and award. And kind of the same thing, I used Copic sketch markers. First, I sketched it out and then I filled it in with the markers. And I can't remember if I used a photo in particular to go off of, for a reference.
That's beautiful.
Audience want to see it.
Oh, they want to see it out there?
Audience wants to see it.
Did you just show them out there?
Do you want to see the other one?
Yes.
And Vivian, would you kindly come on up and share your pieces?
I'm Vivian Sullivan. And so, I first got involved in these Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards in seventh grade. I learned about it through my middle school art teacher, Mrs. Rutter. And since seventh grade, every year I have contributed art into the Scholastics. So, this past year, I submitted this piece, which was inspired by my friend Helen Vaughn. She actually just started a beekeeping club, so I was super inspired by that. And I had a photo shoot with her. And this piece was oil paint on wood. And I also made that piece, which is a digital piece. And one morning, I just woke up and I was inspired by the art community on many of the social medias that I'm on. And so, I just created that with my school iPad. And while I did both of those pieces at home on my own time, I've also created pieces within the classroom, like this one, which was from... I did a kind of, I copied my face on a printer copier thing and I made a charcoal drawing of it in the classroom. So, I won a Gold Key for that last year.
Congratulations.
Yes, so Julia, again, she's away this semester, but you can check out her work online. But she did a fabulous painting, I believe, of gummy bears. And I believe it was an oil painting. And she actually created that through a class at Mecca. And so, many of our students are involved with other classes outside of school and in addition to the work that they create within the school. They're very busy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and all the students for sharing their work. It truly shows passion and a lifelong interest in the arts. And it's amazing to behold. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Hi, I'm Jessica and I'm here to talk to you about our ESOL program. The slides aren't turning. Sorry, wait a minute. Okay. A little about me, I'm new to the Portland area. I moved here last summer when my husband accepted a job. I studied at Boston University for grad school. And for the past 12 years, I was teaching English learners in Newton, Massachusetts. A fun fact is that I also consider myself a language learner. I studied Spanish for many years in both high school and college. And I was able to study abroad in Mexico and also Spain. And for the first time, I understood what it felt like to be dropped in a place where you didn't fully understand the language and culture. Here's a little bit about our English language learners this year. We have 19 students. 10 students are at Palm Cove, 6 are at the middle school, and 3 are at the high school. We have 11 different languages in our program. The most common ones are Spanish and Arabic. Our English learners and their families are from Canada, Democratic Republic of Congo, Ethiopia, Iceland, India, Iraq, Netherlands, Pakistan, Peru, Rwanda, and Venezuela. Whew, we're truly an international program. Maine is a part of the WIDA consortium. WIDA stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And they provide us with guidance for teaching ELLs and also with the annual access test. So, every year, students are tested on their academic language in the four language domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The access test also gives us information about our students' proficiency levels. A Level 1 student would be a beginner and a Level 6 student would be comparable to a native speaker. In order to exit from the ELL program, you would need to achieve a proficiency level of 4.5. And research shows that it takes five to seven years to fully develop academic language. We just received our access scores from this year. And I'm happy to report that all of our students made progress. And many of our students made a lot of progress. We had three students exit the program this year. Some of our goals of the ESOL program, our main goal is to help students achieve English proficiency. Part of my job is also to develop an individual language plan for each student, which outlines goals and monitors progress. I also meet with content teachers and provide strategies and support. And finally, our main goal is to celebrate diversity in Cape and to really support the ELL students and also to enrich our community. Whenever you have students together from different cultures, it really benefits the entire community as a whole. Can I take any questions?
I have a question. Hi, those that were in the program that you said exited the program, for how long were they in the program for? Do you know? I know you're new, but...
Yeah, so one student was in the program for one year. And so, he had just moved here. So, we'll move to Cape, but he had been living in Falmouth before that. So, he wasn't new to the United States exactly. Another student, I think it was his third year. And another student who exited was actually born in the United States, but his family speaks another language at home. So, he exited as well.
I don't have any questions really. I'm encouraged that the number of students has increased. I think that's exciting for all of us and wonderful that there are kids who are graduating from the program as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to administrative reports. Principal updates first.
Jason went home sick, so that's why he's not here tonight to talk about the elementary school.
I'm not going to talk about the elementary school. So, every year, life in a school, and especially a middle school, kind of ebbs and flows throughout the year. And there's this kind of getting this sense of urgency at this time of year. And everybody has a lot of things to kind of accomplish and get done. Because everything can always wait till tomorrow sometimes and nothing's urgent until it becomes urgent. So, you kind of get that, just feel that little bit of a sense happening. And so, today, when I was thinking about what I would say tonight, I really started to realize, wow, a lot happens here in the end of the year. And really, it's all dependent upon a lot of our staff going above and beyond a little bit of just their classroom responsibilities. So, some of those things that we do, and I just, I have a quick little list that I thought of when I was just kind of sitting there thinking. But, so all within the last either week or coming up in the next couple of weeks. For example, we just, we have the Grade 5 classes are going to the Freedom Trail in Boston. So, you know, they're packing up 125 kids and a bunch of chaperones and they're going to go take them through Boston. Again, they don't really have to do that, but it's important to them to do it. And it's great, and the kids are looking forward to it, they love it. But at this time of year, it's just another thing. And it's surprising, and I'm impressed that they want to go and tackle that challenge. With NWA's coming up next week and there'll be a lot of excuses and reasons why that's hard to manage right now, but they're just, they're excited for it and tackling it head-on. So, that's one good example, the Freedom Trail next, this Thursday, actually. And then, the 6th grader's got back from Chilwaki. That's a commitment, a bold commitment, you know, to go and spend the night in Chilwaki and to be there. And I got to go out on Wednesday and Mr. Murray went out on Thursday. And it's just so much fun to see kids outside of their comfort zone and where they typically are. And, you know, they're coming back and today, they're like, "Oh, we're going to eat lunch with our Chilwaki group." And all of these cool things that carry over and come back from that. And the little success stories that, you know, we never really hear about unless you actually work in the school because we don't advertise them on the billboard. But it's well worth the trip. And it's, for some kids, almost life-changing with some of the things they conquer when they're gone on that trip. So, that is always really neat to see that and to see the level of excitement within our staff for that. I think it's really impressive and it's something to be proud of. Tonight, for example, 7th and 8th grade band chorus has an event going on right now. If you don't know Mrs. Ramsey, she's in there every morning at 7:00, it feels like. It's probably not every morning, but it's most mornings. And kids are committed to being in there. But at this time of year, it'd be really easy to wear that down a little bit and say, "Now, we got it." But they're in there just kind of always going. And I think it shows some commitment on her part and the students and the parents. But when I just kind of walked around for a while and thought about all those things, it's pretty impressive. We have the book fair coming up. Trail work's going to start for the 8th grade, so they'll be out cleaning up the trails. Then band, they're back on it again for Memorial Day Parade. You know, weekend event, again, could be somewhere else, but they're there with their kids. 5th grade, just in the past week or so, went to the GMRI and kind of helping lead up and prepping them for their trip to Kettle Cove, which is coming up, and then a bunch of other 8th grade trip things. So, as I thought about it, it's like, wow, there's really a lot of commitment and energy going on. And the kids feel that. And I think they feel like it's a great place to be for that. On an admin note, we meet about every other Tuesday as an admin team. And it was exciting last week, we were able to, I kind of offered up the middle school staff to be, I won't say guinea pigs, but now that I've said it, it kind of is that, to really have us go in and start working as an admin team on calibrating our observation practices and what we see when we go in rooms. And really, not to evaluate staff, but for our benefit to come out and say, "Wow, is this what you saw and this is what I saw?" And we can start to calibrate that. So, I'm proud of the staff for, I literally told them the day before, "Hey, you're going to, the whole admin team is going to be in here." And to get that excited feedback. And some of their comments were, "We really, thank you for being proud of us and trusting us enough to have the whole admin team come." So, some of that goodwill, you can just feel it bubbling up. And I think the more that we can get out and do those things, it's really beneficial for us. But it also puts a feather in the cap of the teachers that work hard and really appreciate having us in those rooms. So, there's been a lot of that kind of stuff happening. And I just think it's a busy time, but it's a good time. So, thanks.
Troy, I'm just, I'm so excited to see the yellow tulips getting ready.
They're coming up.
I know, they're...
We were worried if they were going to come up, and they're up. So, yeah, so it's exciting. That's kind of a nice kind of spring ending to that whole initiative.
So, a few not necessarily connected things. First of all, concerning the Power School portal, I've gotten a lot of feedback, a little bit more tonight. I will say that I generally pride myself on being, doing a good job communicating and talking to students. I will confess that it wasn't the model of communication. We will be actively soliciting input. I will say, from the input that I've had, I've had about equal numbers of students and parents saying, "It's a great decision, it's a horrible decision," and people who say they don't care. But those are all voices that have some specifics built into them. In terms of, just clarifying a couple specifics, the portal is actually open 24 hours. It's open from Monday morning until Tuesday morning. So, it can be accessed anytime in that realm. The last two weeks of the school year, we are going to, we have it open every day because those are high-stakes time for kids. I will say, one of the things I hear from teachers is they are having more conversations with students than they did in the past about how the students are doing and what they're missing. So, there's a lot of learning on both sides. I suspect next year, from the feedback I'm getting, we'll maybe have a middle ground somewhere that we have to define. And very open to that and that sort of stuff. Certainly, the goal was to reduce stress. It was prompted in large part by a lot of feedback I got from students about how it drove them crazy that every single time a teacher entered any grade in their portal, they got a bing on their, and they felt an almost compulsion to check it. And it's not anything that we had any control over as a school. Individual students did have control. But even when they complained about it and then we told them they had control, they couldn't bring themselves to turn it off. So, it was just sort of constant binging. It was a fascinating conversation. So, we'll continue to talk about it. So, that's for everybody. Second, graduation for board members who don't know is Sunday, June 9th at 1:00, hopefully Fort Williams. The alternative is in gymnasium, but that's where it is. If you haven't yet gotten formal invitations, you will. But we'd love to have board members who are able to come. So, again, Sunday, June 9th, 1:00 p.m. I wanted to mention advanced placement testing. Julia and Piper mentioned a little bit. So, the guidance department has been giving, coordinating hundreds and hundreds of tests over the last week and this week so far and the remainder of next week. And one of the particular challenges here is that the guidance office is down right now, half of its staff. So, they only have Randy LaPointe and Marie Cross, who are in the office doing the coordination. Amin Keenan, the other school counselor, is actually typically in charge of AP testing. This is all good news. He's been out for 10 days on paternity leave because he and his wife just had another child. But it happened to coincide with exactly the two weeks of the AP exams. So, reportedly, he's coming back on Monday and we'll be glad to have him. So reportedly, he's coming back on Monday, and we'll be glad to have him. Oh, Senior Transition Project is beginning a week from yesterday. It's beginning on Monday. So seniors will be dispersing for two weeks to various job placements, internship placements, and that sort of stuff. So we're sort of winding up the year with seniors, meeting with senior leaders on a regular basis to try to keep everybody energies channeled in a positive direction. I've been really happy with the leadership of the senior class this year for the entire year, and really, the whole class has been great. And lastly, I'll just mention Wednesday early release. I hope I'm not stealing Kathy Stankert's thunder. I'll try not to say very much because I know show. So one of the things that's been really nice about the last two or three early releases, including the one tomorrow and the one in early June, is there are opportunities that are being taken now to work with, between middle school and high school. And that's been true in English, social, English, math, science, and world language so far. So tomorrow, there are two departments. We're continuing conversations that have been going on for the last couple of weeks, a couple of early releases. So that's very exciting and sort of, I think, accomplishing the highest and best use of what the goal was of having an early release program because those kinds of meetings could not otherwise happen. So, thank you very much for that. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to add the student-driven learning exhibition yesterday.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for reminding me of that.
That was really impressive. It was so encouraging to see like at least three or four more students this year than last year.
So what Suzanne has mentioned is we have a student-driven learning program that's coordinated by John Holdridge. And so yesterday, the students were outside the cafeteria presenting some of the work that they had done. And it was from movie making to music composition to redesigning a part or coming up with a conceptual design for part of the cafeteria. One young man was doing, has a YouTube channel that he's created. I'm going to forget some others. There are an exciting variety of things.
Somebody was a warden, you know, worked with a police officer and a warden.
Exactly. A senior who's interested in becoming a game warden in the future was able to shadow Officer Ben Davis from the Cape Elizabeth Police Department, and also a game warden on two or three occasions, and has really been able to do some networking. And one of the, when I talked to the students, I asked them all, because these are all areas of passion for students. And I said, what's the difference actually having the time for students within the school day to do it in terms of student-driven learning and getting credit? And they really appreciated the fact that it's that 50 minutes a day for three days, it's out of our four-day rotation. It really does give them time and a focus of energy for doing precisely the things that they love. Some really good work coming out of it. I was very impressed. There was one young man who wrote a 50-page story that I suspect none of his teachers would ever have suspected that he would write a 50-page story at any point in his high school career. So it was really quite impressive. And to hear them all talk about it so passionately was really gratifying. Thank you for reminding me about that.
I was just so impressed.
And there was one young man who's affiliated with the school board member who was featured as the star in a number of videos as well. So that was kind of interesting to see.
That's why I brought it up.
Future as well, so.
I just loved asking everybody, did you have fun? Like, this is the best thing I've ever done. And then there was one student, the one you referred to, not my son, but his friend, who I think combined it not only with SDL, but with his English class. So he got two grades for this, one for English and one for student-driven learning. So it was creative, you know, approach to two things. It was great.
Anything else?
I just wanted to thank, it sounds like the Power School portal is maybe a work in progress. But I appreciate you taking a stab at maybe things better. You know, it sometimes takes time to get it right, but you got to start somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Katherine.
Just a couple of things to share with the board. Some of the work that we've been doing in special education. One of the pieces is that the, both the Poncove Special Education Team as well as the middle school Special Education Team have gotten together on the last couple of, the most recent early release days to work on planning for students that are transitioning from the fourth grade to the fifth grade. And this collaboration is an effort to make, to support, excuse me, to make, to put supports in place so that students can be successful with regard to transition as well as hopefully diffuse some of the anxiety. As well as, there's quite a bit of work going on at the middle school and high school as well in that there are multiple transitions that are often just the student and one of the support staff are doing, taking trips to the school to help foster relationships, make those connections, again, to help diffuse some of the worry and the anxiety of the transition in itself. At Poncove, the Poncove Special Education Team recently, we conducted CDS transfer IEP meetings for students who are currently provided services through Child Development Services, but will be coming to kindergarten next year. We currently have seven students slated to join the Poncove community this fall. I also, at the state level, I just wanted to mention that there has been no significant news with the Garden to public schools assuming the responsibility for special education services for preschoolers.
You beat me to my question.
There recently, there was another bill submitted just today. But again, that's, as far as significant news, nothing on that front. Currently, we are servicing 166 students in special education. Poncove, we have 70 students. Middle school, we have 46. And at the high school, we have 50. We have approximately 16 students in referral for special education services and two out-of-district placements. And do you have any questions?
Not anymore.
Thank you for focusing on the transition between the school buildings. I'm sure that will make a difference.
Thank you.
I still have a few things to say. I want to start with EL. You had that wonderful presentation on the services we provide for English learners, and I wanted to update you on where we stand for next year. We anticipate 14 Ls at this point. Those are students in grades one through 12, so those are known commodities. Jessica mentioned that three have exited the program, and then we have two students who are moving. We are screening six kindergarteners. And I recall at a workshop, the question came up whether it would make more sense to screen the kindergarteners now. And I did ask Jessica about that. And she said that early screening is not recommended. It can result in the over-identification of Ls. So much progress is made over the kindergarten, over the summer, at that kindergarten age. And also, in kindergarten, unlike the other grades, a kindergartner has to score a 6.0 rather than a 4.5. So we want to, it just makes a lot more sense then to do that screening in September, even though it can be difficult in terms of scheduling. It's just considered best practice. And Jessica and I have been working together to revise the LAU plan. There was a copy of it in your packet, and I'll be, I'm sure I'll be back again in a few minutes to talk about that. So, that's okay. That's it for EL. In terms of gifted and talented, I wanted to mention, again, you'll see it on the agenda, but that our gifted and talented teacher, Christine Winterbrook, has resigned. She is moving to the Seattle area. So we have posted for her position and hope to have someone hired by next month. And she's though remaining on top of the job and is in the process of overseeing the screening and identification process, which occurs for students in grades third, fifth, and seventh. And then in professional development land, you know, we have a PD Wednesday tomorrow. And I'll let you know, since Jason's not here, what's happening at Poncove. There's going to be a refresher on how to administer the NWA because they're going to be conducting NWA testing next week. And the, after that's completed, then the teacher's going to be looking at science. So this is the third PD Wednesday that's been devoted to science. There were significant revisions to the science curriculum this year. So it's looking back and looking forward. So how do things work this year, given all the changes that we made? And what supports do we need to continue the process of improving our science curriculum? At middle school, as Jeff mentioned, the seventh and 12th grade, seventh through 12th grade ELA teachers are going to be working together. Their intent is to identify an appropriately challenging reading passage for each grade level, and then to develop a set of multiple-choice questions for each passage that can be administered next year. So they're looking at alignment, vertical alignment, and common assessment. So excited about that work. Fifth and, fifth through 12th grade world language teachers are going to be doing similar work. The allied arts teachers are going to be working with our Great Schools Partnership Coach. Again, how did the year go? And what do we want to do for next year? Starting to look at that planning. And I'm going to be working with the fifth and sixth grade ELA teachers. That's at the middle school. And then at the high school, those teachers who aren't working vertically across schools are going to be looking at student work. And this is work that they started, I think, was it at a faculty meeting? And that's just really, really, really useful work. An assessment will be given. The teacher brings the results of that assessment to the table, and then the teachers look at it collectively. And they're looking at, what are the strengths in our instruction? And this is particularly valuable when it's a common assessment. What are the strengths in our instruction? What misconceptions do our students have? What skills do we need to emphasize the next time around? So really, really, really good work. And they'll be doing that by department. And then we are starting the process of soliciting applications for summer work. That process will begin next year. As we did last summer, we're seeking collaborative projects that are designed to advance district and building goals. And that's it? Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Hi, everybody. I just want to talk, so every time I come up, you always say, hey, we're looking good, we're in good shape financially. One thing I wanted to point out is that when I've been saying that, I've been comparing it to 100% of our budget. But as the end of the year, under the school year is fast approaching, I felt it was prudent to recommend to the superintendent that we have a budget freeze in order to increase the amount we can put into our fund balance for future years. So that's why, if you saw the email from Donna that we are having a budget freeze for the rest of the year to help put more funds into the fund balance for the year end. So, other than that, everything is pretty much on track. Any questions for me?
Oh, yes. So can you elaborate on what that entails? Because just for everyone's general education, what a budget freeze means?
Okay, well, it's, a budget freeze is when any purchase that is requested or is undertaken has to go into more scrutiny, primarily by the superintendent, and also by myself. But, so any purchase that anybody wants to make, they can't just go over to Walmart and purchase something. They really got to make sure that they get the prior approval ahead of time. Or they could very well be denied getting reimbursement, getting reimbursed for, or will deny even paying for something, so.
So that includes items that were budgeted for, or...
Not necessarily. A lot of people have put in purchase orders already, and those are all being approved and paid for. It's just for any last-minute items. And then the superintendent's given everybody a week to kind of get in any personal reimbursements and stuff that they needed to have, that they needed reimbursement for. Okay?
That's how it's like if you have a budget freeze earlier on. Because if you need approval, yes, there should be a certain amount of purchase that you don't need approval. But if it's over $100 or $500, you need approval. You need to set up policies at some point.
We do, we have definitely a procedure that if they want to buy something that's more than $50, they are supposed to do a purchase order, which is a prior approval process. We are trying to train everybody to go through that process. So then we have a tighter rein on all the purchases and everything, so.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome, yes.
Summer work come out of the next fiscal year's budget? Okay. Great.
Okay.
Is it, do we do budget freezes often, or is that... I have.
Yeah, Donna has. I haven't...
It's very common.
Yes. It's very common in other districts. I don't know if Cape Elizabeth has ever had one. I know since I've been here, and almost four years, we have not done a budget freeze, so. But as Donna said, it's quite common in other districts.
So is it common in particular time of the year?
It does get more common towards the end of the year when they start, when things start to tighten up and you know that you need to create, make sure you have funds for the end of the year. Okay. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, some good news. U.S. News ranked Cape Elizabeth High School as the second-best high school in Maine, second-only to Maine's school of science and mathematics. Cape Elizabeth High School is ranked as the best traditional high school in Maine. So again, this represents a combined effort of really all the teachers, staff, and administrators in our district. It's not just a 9-12 honor. It really does represent the whole district. And it also represents the amount of support that the community gives to the school district. The six weighted factors for the ranking include college readiness, which is 30%, and that's measured by the proportion of 12th graders in a school who took and passed either AP or IB exams. College curriculum breadth is worth 10% of the weight, and that is calculated using students who took and passed multiple AP, IB, or IB exams in 2016-17. Math and reading proficiency is worth 20%, and that's based on proficiency in state tests. Math and reading performance is worth 20%, and that's a comparison of the district's performance on state assessments with what U.S. News predicts for schools with similar demographic characteristics. So that's a comparison of school with the same, schools with the same demographics. Graduation rates are weighted 10%, and that's based on a formula with the students who entered ninth grade in 2012-13 and graduated four years later. And the last category is underserved student performance, and that's worth 10%. And that's based on how the subgroups of Black, Hispanic, and low-income students performed in comparison with non-underserved students in the state. So they took all of those things into consideration when doing those rankings. Another piece of great news is that one of Cape Elizabeth High School seniors, Rohan Friedman, was named one of two, Maine's two Presidential Scholars. And hopefully, we can honor him next month. We'll invite him to come to the meeting. This is a very exciting honor, and we're so pleased for Rohan. Last night, the town council voted to approve the FY '20 school budget. So we are over the, really, the second hurdle. And I just want to thank everyone who worked so hard to meet the budget goals, as identified by the school board. The budget referendum is on Tuesday, June 11th, just to remind people. And I really urge everyone to get out there and vote. CEAF grants. Cape Elizabeth Education Foundation has awarded seven grants to district staff and one student. And there's a description of those grants, grant awardees in your packet. So just a little information about the projects that were awarded. One is called Aqua Culture Maine Food Culture. And that's a project-based experiential learning experience to look at how different sectors of Maine are changing and developing. Boys to Men and Hardy Girls is another award. That's a series of four one-hour workshops on gender stereotypes and identity, healthy relationships and violence prevention for seventh and eighth graders. There's another spirit series which was awarded, and we did have that award for this year as well. And there were two great performances. It's an immersive three-week residency program to work on a one-act historical bio that students study, co-write, stage, and perform. They just did one a few weeks ago on Harriet Tubman. That was pretty amazing. The Hub is another project. It's a creation of a space for volunteer and extended learning opportunities at the high school. There's a next-gen Learning Maker Ed at the Cape Elizabeth Middle School. And that's a space and storage area a space and storage area for the new makerspace program at the middle school. There was a project called Positive Bathroom Makeover. This was a student project, a student application for the grant, and it's to enhance bathrooms with motivational and inspirational quotes for kids with anxiety, or just anyone that needs a positive boost. And the last grant was a permanent communication system for Cape Elizabeth High School auditorium. When we did the tours last year, we saw that backstage had no way to communicate with the lighting area, so that will provide for that. So I'd like to thank CF for the work they do in supporting Cape Elizabeth schools, it's so important. And the students and staff for submitting such interesting and worthwhile grant requests to CF. So I believe that those, the awardees were notified yesterday, so they do know about that, so it's pretty exciting. I was going to talk also about, did the administrators go into the middle school, which Troy already talked about, but we had a great visit, and we were able to go into, we divided into teams and went into four class, four classrooms, each team went into four classrooms. And we used the Marshall rubrics and scored the teachers, and then left and went. And again, as Troy said, it was, it was not to evaluate the teachers, but it was for our benefit, it was for our training, to make sure that we were on the same page about what we were looking for and how we were scoring. So that was a really interesting experience. We thank the, thank the middle school for opening the doors for us. And at the next eighteen meeting, we're going to the high school, and then following that, we'll go to Poncove to do the same thing. So the teachers were great, they were really open and wonderful about having us into their classrooms, and we saw some great teaching that was going on. You also have in your packet the enrollment numbers as of May 1st, and we're down one student at Poncove from last month, and seven students from last May, so that information is in your packet. That's it?
Thanks, Donna.
Can I ask you a question, Donna?
Sure.
Or explanation? You said the ranking, the, I think there were six ranks to decide what's in the school. Do you know where, how we did, which ranks stood out the most, and where we need to work more?
I didn't say anything that gave us.
Okay.
Our ranks for different, I think we just got one ranking, and that's all of those things went together. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So moving on to new business, may I have a motion for, for seven?
I move we approve the LAU plan?
Second? Any discussion? We would love some discussion, if anybody wants to discuss.
So it's in your packet. It's the last document right before the start of the policies. And I can, I can provide a brief introduction maybe, and then walk you through it, or just answer questions?
Just a brief introduction for the audience?
Okay, brief introduction. So the LAU plan is a federal requirement. It's named after a landmark Supreme Court decision from 1974, it was Lau versus Nichols. It's actually named for a person, so it's a capital L, and then an EU, doesn't, we always think it stands for something, but it's just a person's name. And the point was to, what that, that Supreme Court decision did was to require that school districts have an equal access plan to protect the English-language learners. And the required components of the, of the plan are delineated by section, the sections that you see in our plan. So we begin with a general policy statement, which is really just making the connection to the federal and state mandates. You have to identify in your plan who's, who's responsible for its implementation. Typically, the superintendent will designate a LAU plan coordinator in Cape Elizabeth. The LAU plan coordinator is the Director of Teaching and Learning. And then there's a section on how English-language learners are identified, and the most important screening component is the Language Use Survey that is in all of our enrollment packets. And so parents or guardians complete that, and then based on the results of that survey, then further screening takes place. And that's typically a series of assessments. And then once they are formally identified, then they are placed and programming is developed. And Jessica mentioned in her presentation that each student has an I-LAP, which is, you know, an individualized language acquisition plan. And as she mentioned, you know, depending where the student is in, in their language acquisition, it can take up to seven years to be able to exit services. Student progress is evaluated, because we belong to, because Maine belongs to this WITA consortium, that's how, that's the primary way in which student progress is evaluated. It's an annual test. Even if parents refuse services for their child, their child must take this assessment. But then their, I mean, their, the EL teacher is always tracking the project, the progress, the classroom progress of, of the English-language learners. As was mentioned, students are able to exit once they achieve that 4.5, unless they're kindergartners, in which case they have to get that 6.0, which is equivalent of native speech. And then they are monitored for two years, and if there are issues, any issues that may be connected to the, the fact of there being English-language learners, then we start the process over. I mean, you know, that becomes a consideration. The program is evaluated annually. Parents are kept apprised in their native language as much as possible. As I mentioned, they do have the right to refer, to refuse ESAL services, that's not typically done. And then we maintain documentation. Yes?
Is this new to Cape, or is this just a renewal of initiative?
That's a great question. No, you've had a LAU plan for some time, it hadn't been updated in a while, so we took it upon ourselves to updating.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, I should have clarified that from the beginning. Actually, if you go to the website, you find the LAU plan, then you'll see when it was originally adopted, and then the years in which it was, was revised. I think the last time it was revised was 2012, but.
Okay.
Don't hold me to that.
Thanks.
Enough had changed that we felt like it needed a reboot. Now you have a question?
I answered most of my questions, so I guess my only remaining question is, does this reflect our current practice, and will there be an effort to get us from where we are now to what's in the plan?
This does reflect our current practice. Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you. Oh, good. Thanks. Okay, any further discussion? Comments? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to seven B and C. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following policies for first reading.
No, you don't have to approve this.
So I move we consider to approve. We don't have to approve it, right?
No, we just discuss.
So we just discuss.
So just seven B, sorry. Hope, do you want to?
Sure. So seven B is just first reading of what's required, that's policy ACAA, which is harassment and sexual harassment of students. We did not make any material changes in the discussion. It looks like the current policy is pretty much in line with the Maine School Management Association recommendate, recommended policy, but we did fix some typos, and we included some corrections of references to other policies, so it's just a little.
And then moving on to seven C, may I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the following policies for second reading, as outlined in our packet. Policy FF, naming of school facilities. IHBEA, program for English learners, and KHC, distribution of non-school materials.
Have a second? Second? Any discussion?
Well, I can give some background on the policies and the changes that we're suggesting. So in the naming of school facilities, that's policy FF. On this one, we, we started out with a very broad discretion of the board to decide whether or not to name a school facility in any manner, and we sort of said, you know, we need to put some, some parameters around this. And at the last meeting, I suggested different varieties of restrictions, not naming it after individuals, having a sort of requirements around only deceased individuals. And ultimately, we had a very good discussion about it. I think we spent, we gave it very, you know, the attention it deserved, I think, but ultimately came around to, we don't want to handcuff future boards in certain ways. We don't want to say, we're not going to name the facilities after individuals, ever, period, because ultimately, there might be an exception. And we don't want to put a future board in a situation where they have to say, oh, we need to revise the policy, and then we're going to do this, because there's a, you know, we're using example of a heroic community member who did something so valiant that everyone just said, we have to honor this person in this way. So we give future boards the ability to, to name facilities after an individual, but we also then, you know, included some, some restrictions around that, the caveat that it has to be some, you know, absolutely universal support. And also, the critical part, I think, that we changed is that we created a committee. So the, the board isn't going to come to a public meeting and have a debate about, you know, naming the facility, that's obviously not really a practical method. So we created the committee, the committee has a broad range of community members, board members, administrators, teachers, parents. And then they would gather input, come to the board with their recommendation, and if the board agreed with the committee, they would then approve. And ultimately, final decision always rests with the board and the town council, depending on where the naming would apply to building, exterior building, or a classroom, or part of a facility. So that's the policy as drafted that we're suggesting we adopt. It includes a broad committee, the ability to name after individuals, if there's universal support. We did also include a, sort of an opinion that we are encouraging people to honor individuals in other ways. So to the extent, you know, this comes up, because it is, there's a lot of, we want to honor a lot of teachers. There's many teachers who are, who put in years of service and, and are, are, you know, contributors to our, our district. So we did want to include a mention of that, you know, this, that can be, they can be honored with establishing a scholarship or an endowment fund. So we wanted to include that as a reference. And that's it. So that's the naming of school facilities.
Can I just add to, just to clarify, in terms of final, final say, if, if it's a classroom or, or a location within the school buildings, and the school board has, has the final say, if it's an exterior, if it's a building, a new building, the naming an exterior facility, then it goes to the school board, and the school board approves, and it then moves on to town council for their final approval?
Yes.
So it's just the differentiation between interior and exterior?
Yes, that is correct. And it's worth noting that this policy is, is actually incorporated as part of one of the town council's policies, so they'll need to update their policy to reflect this.
That's right.
But like you said, internal classrooms, it's within our purview to make final decision, but anything outside of that, if it's town-facing, school buildings, or, you know, exterior naming, it would then go to town council.
After us, right. Thank you.
So just quickly, having read this for the first time, I think that the second line, a request shall be made to the school board for a naming request, could be a little wordsmithed. Just throw that out there. My other, I would like to thank everybody for giving this the time and thought that it deserves, and I, I'm sad that I'm not able to make policy committee meetings during spring sports season, but I thank everybody for the work. My last question is really a procedural question, which is, at our last business meeting, I believe Hope asked us to share our thoughts and opinions about how to come up with a policy. And so, in my opinion, this is a first read, not a second read, because I've never seen it before. So how can it be a second read? Just a question.
That, yeah, that's an interesting point. I don't, procedurally, I can't comment on that. Yep. We did receive input, and we did have the input, and we discussed it at the meeting, and then we dropped, and then this was the draft that came out of that, so I suppose.
We had, we had a policy prior to this.
Right. We did, so that.
So it's not a brand-new policy, it's just reworded.
Right. But when we bring a new policy, we usually give it a first read, we let the public.
But you're using the word new policy, whereas this is not necessarily, which is reworded.
Right. I'm not communicating clearly. When, this is a major revision to our original policy. So anytime we've made a major revision, first read doesn't apply to only new policy, it applies to major revision, so I'm, I don't, I'm happy with it. I just want to bring up a procedural.
Well, it is the first read.
This is the, this should be, in my opinion, a first read, because this is a materially.
It's not here in, in the packet until this meeting.
Right.
Whether it's, it was in a, it was in a different format.
It was a completely different policy.
It appeared in a skeletal version of this.
Yeah, right.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, well, then, you know, I think.
I don't, I'm not unhappy with the policy. I'm happy with it. I just want to make sure that we're careful about procedure.
I think it's fair to point out and, and table this for the next business meeting, so that gives everybody ample time to further consider the revised. So do we need a motion to, to table this one in particular, then?
I have a question, though, because I see that it could be this procedural, seems, because it is a major revision. But if everybody agrees that, that they like this for now, for this one, because you said you didn't have any problem with the policy, for this one, can we approve it, but it's for reference in future, if we're making big changes, it's a first read at our business meeting?
So if someone wants to make a motion to table it, I guess that's what we're at, otherwise.
Oh, I see. Okay.
The only reason I bring it up is that in, you know, when we've made, let's say, we were making a fairly substantial update to accepting gifts and donations, we'll say. We needed to make sure that the public had ample time, and so the first read was, you know, we were seeing it for the first time, the public was seeing it for the first time. That's, that's really all I'm talking about.
So we have a motion, but we would have to withdraw the motion, so that we could make a new motion?
Does anybody want to do that?
I don't necessarily want to do that, I just wanted to make a, just a, a point that we would consider being careful about this for the future.
I think it's wise to make the motion, so help me with this.
So you just want to withdraw, make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to withdraw the approval of, all of them, or just the one?
Just the one.
Yeah. From policy FF, naming of school facilities, for approval this evening.
Have a second? Second, Beth? Okay. Any discussion?
I apologize for being a stickler.
Well, we can work on that other sentence, because that is wordy. Request is twice, it can't be twice.
It's not good.
I, I support tableing it, I mean, I think if anyone in the public has thoughts they would like to have added.
It's wise.
So your motion was to approve all of these, so you withdraw that motion?
I withdraw that motion to approve all.
Okay, so let's, let's start over again with FF then.
Okay.
So we've just had two, Heather made a motion, Kimberly second, a motion to remove FF from the slate of voting, and we haven't voted on it yet. All those in favor of tabling it? Okay, yeah. All right, so now we need a new motion for seven C.
So I move we approve the following policies for second reading. I can't do this, what is that? IHBEA, program for English learners, and KHC, distribution of non-school materials.
May I have a second to this? Second, Beth? Any discussion? Fill us in, or?
I can't, yes. So IHBEA is what was originally our program for limited English proficiency students. We're now calling it the English Program for English Learners Policy?
It's just English learners.
It's just English learners, okay, okay, yeah. I was wondering, because the edits in the, the policy do not coincide. So the edits to that, as I described last meeting, are, we've updated the language to be in line with what we're using in the contemporary context, which is we're no longer saying limited in English proficiency, rather it's English learners. And also to reflect our current process around the oversight and who's responsible for the LAU plan. So that's all we've done.
Thank you.
And, and we. And any questions or comments on that? And then, finally, KHC, distribution of non-school materials. So, this is a new policy and we did move, this is in the same format that it came to the board meeting last time for the first reading. And just to give a summary again, what this does is it gives the district guidelines around what can go home and backpack mail, what goes on bulletin boards, what's distributed by emails. And it's effectively, it's restricted to school and school-related communications, thereby giving the district some, basically a policy to guide decisions and fielding requests. And I understand there's numerous requests that come in for distribution of materials through school. So, those two are here for approval this month.
Thank you, Hope. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Moving on to item 7D. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the superintendent's nominations of personnel to second-year probationary contracts according to 20A MRSA subsection 13201. The deadline for written notice of renewal, non-renewal to probationary teachers is May 14th. Also, CEEA, collective bargaining agreement, Article 16, contract notification as outlined in our agenda tonight.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Consideration to approve the superintendent's nominations of personnel to third-year probationary contracts. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the superintendent's nominations of personnel to third-year probationary contracts as defined in our meeting materials in our packet.
May I have a second?
Second.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Any comments or discussion? So, just to clarify, so, third, moving on to third-year probationary contracts, once approved, this is their final year, entering their final probationary year. Okay, so, this time next year, we'll be approving their contract. Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. Item 7F. Consideration to approve the superintendent's nominations of personnel to first continuing contracts. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the superintendent's nomination of personnel to first continuing contracts as outlined in our board meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's see. 7G. Consideration to approve the appointment of Mons Racturas Salvador, Spanish teacher at Cape Elizabeth High School. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the appointment of Mons Racturas Salvador, Spanish teacher at Cape Elizabeth.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Item 7H.
I move we approve the appointment of Alexander Anesco as Point Four Computer Science Teacher at Cape Elizabeth High School.
May I have a second?
Second, Beth.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Item 7I, please. May I have a motion?
I move we approve the appointment of Christine Marshall as Point Three Theater Teacher at Cape Elizabeth High School.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 7J. May I have a motion, please?
I move we approve Michael Scarpone as instrumental music teacher at Cape Elizabeth High School.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? This is funny. 7K. Notification of resignation of Christine, it's not funny. Sorry, it's just a funny order. Resignation of Christine Winterbrook, as Kathy told us earlier. It's a funny placement. Is that where, no way? Yeah, here we go. 7L. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we consider the 2019-2020 notice of school budget adopted by town council and submitted to budget validation referendum to be approved. In that following council approval of the school budget, the superintendent be authorized to complete, execute, and deliver that notice to the town clerk for use at the budget validation referendum.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? That's very exciting. All those in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on to eight committee reports. Hope, you're pretty good, unless you have anything else to add? Okay. PAS, I went to my first meeting last week and it was the end-of-the-year meeting and I made it in the nick of time. This year, they're holding the senior, they're calling it senior celebration at Merrill Auditorium, which I think is a great venue. I don't have the date in front of me. It's in June, but it's open to anybody who is interested. I hope to go and you don't have to make a reservation. We'll post that and show on our school website. And other than that, I think they closed with some asking feedback from everybody in the committee about ideas for the future. And I think one of the common themes that arose from just various people in the group was to focus on marketing paths specifically to parents, so that the buy-in from parents has increased, which I thought was a good idea.
Tech committee? So, we are close to the finish line with budget. And so, that feels like a comfortable time for tech committee to try to come together and do some work on finding a good website hosting and content delivery company. So, I would like to be in touch with Noel to get this off the ground. And I would like to invite anybody, anybody, teachers, administrators, students, board members, community members that would like to be a part of this. Send me an email. Let's get this off the ground.
Nelson, drop-off committee, any news?
We'll be meeting this Thursday, I believe, at 8:00 AM for our second meeting. So, report after that.
Kimberly, any news from CEAF beyond what we heard tonight?
No, not much. I went to the meeting on Wednesday night last week. They had, I think, just had a long grant proposal evening and there was just a general sense of appreciation for people bringing the grants forward and the great work that's being done in our community. I may reference some really positive feedback from the author of the book that was read in the middle school that just a lot of kudos to the CEAF, the district, for being open to having such a project.
Thank you. Okay, any school board agenda request? Okay, then. Moving on to announcement of upcoming meetings. Policy looks like they're meeting on Tuesday, May 28 at 3:00 PM, Jordan Conference Room. We have a school board workshop on Tuesday, May 28 at the high school library. And I believe that the topic will be further work on the strategic plan. Sorry.
Goals, identifying the goals.
Identifying goals. So, I'm also thinking that you're going to send out another invitation to anybody who is on the future search, who wants to continue working with us. That would be great. Okay, next, we have item 11.
My earlier announcement, my calendar says the drop-off committee meeting is actually on Friday, the 17th, not Thursday.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And where is it, Nelson?
It's usually at the main office in high school.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 11. May I have a motion, please?
I move we enter into executive session according to 1 MRSA section 4056F for the purpose of discussing a student matter.
A second.
Great. Any discussion? Nope. So, we're going to move out into executive session. We will come back to adjourn. No one.
Did you vote?
Not yet. I'm just discussing. Then, we'll come back to adjourn and end the meeting. But no one has to necessarily wait if they don't want to. All those in favor?
It's all right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming back from executive session for item 12. May I have a motion?
I move we adjourn.
May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great. Thank you.